Good evening. This is Richland Bean Blossom, Community School Corporations, July 18th, 2022 meeting. I would like to have the row call. All members are present except for Dana Kerr. He is out on vacation today. The next order is for visitor comments. Is there any visitor comments? No visitor comments, okay, thank you. Our next line of business is the consent agenda. Part A is approval of minutes, June 8th, 2022 work session meeting. June 20th, 2022, regular board meeting. B, financials, and Jimmy will have the treasures report for us. Claims, as well, is going to be Jimmy. Consideration of donations. $100 for EHS art program for Ellisville Tri-Cappa. $100 for EHS STEAM from Ellisville Tri-Cappa. Item D for personnel resignations, retirements, non-renewals, leaves, and terminations. E for personnel appointments and transfers, 1337. There is, board members, there is a change on number 13 under E. Appointment to, it says E-E-C-C, and that's Corporation ESL teacher. Just be aware of that change.
Madam Secretary, would you like me to give a summary of the claims? Gross wages for June 10th, 2022 is $937,023.19. Gross wages on June 24th, 2022, $545,117.09. Pre-claims from June 1st through June 30th, 2022, is $1,837.783.85. Regular vouchers for 718 of 2022 would be $210,211.94. For claims at Forest Hills, vouchers $1,754.75. For grand total of $3,531,890.82.
Great, thank you. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Aye, second.
Okay, thank you. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, so we are to Assistant Superintendent report, Matt.
All right, you guys should have the cash flows there in front of you. Start with the education fund. We closed out June, which is our June 30 cash balances, which are important for our budgeting. And we'll talk about the budget a little bit later. But as May, the numbers in May and June here, we've paid out a lot of contracts that would have been spread out over the summer months. And so the payroll numbers that you see in June are a little bit inflated than what was typically projected. And again, that lowers what the year-end projection looks like on cash balance. Still in great shape, it's just not as positive a projection as what you saw last month. Things will even out through the summer. We'll have, we have less people working in the summer with some of those contracts paying out. Some of those payroll numbers will even themselves out. What will kind of be the key is the staff that replaces those people, salary benefits, all that stuff. Will create some changes in what that looks like, but we'll continue to key in on that because people still have to make their benefit elections and all that stuff. So I'll continue to update that. But I did update it with the newest DPI 54 form, which is just our state aid tuition as far as what those projections look like from the state. The newest one came out here in July for the new fiscal year. So those numbers that you see on tuition support for July through December is what's most accurate right now from the state. So you see that bump in increase from what we were getting before. It's a new legislative budget year and the new fiscal year, so that number went up. Move on to debt service. We received our June settlement of property tax collection, very normal. The June one is always a little bit bigger than December. We received close to about 60% of our draw. Again, very normal. We did make our first payment on the 2021 GO bond, which is the one bond that we have as kind of all-cycle from the other ones as we start to switch our cycle of how we pay those, which affects how we budget. And then here in July during the actual month that we're actually sitting in right now is when we make a lot of our second payments in the year. We did get our additional appropriation approved by the DOGF that I presented to you previously. They approved it not for what I presented you for the 425, but they approved it for what they noted on the 1782 notice. I don't expect that to be a problem, so we should be good there. Operations fund, we've been staying pretty status quo there. The claims came in a little bit shorter than what we thought they were going to be, which is a good thing. I always want to try to budget a little bit high, just so that we know that we come out on the good side there. And we've continued to do that. So June claims came in a little lower, projection looks a little bit better, still sitting right where we want to be. We're taking care of a lot of things here in the summer and trying to make sure that we're set and ready to go, whether it's, you know, getting some landscaping done on the outside, hopefully here soon, right before school starts. Custodians staying steady on the buildings and so everything's going good there. So with that, I'll take any questions on cash flows.
Questions?
Mr. Rimmer, has there been any discussion this summer with the Teachers Union about next year's contract?
We have not, no. We have not started those discussions yet, no. We will have to do, we'll have to do a hearing to open those discussions formally, so we'll, we have to do that. Typically, we don't start that until September, but we'll do a hearing to start that when we actually start formal bargaining. Obviously Doug and I can always get together and talk about things that maybe are on our mind or things that we might think might be a priority coming up, but the formal bargaining won't start until probably Septemberish.
So as far as, I know last year, under last year's contract, Mr. Yost is part of that too, that you guys were going to have a committee look at the health insurance a little bit more?
Mm-hmm.
About possibly talking to the teachers a little bit more about the advantages, disadvantages of the HSA.
Mm-hmm.
Has that gone on?
Yeah, so we put a lot of, through that, through that committee, we added a lot more resources to the website, tried to do a lot more education with our members about what their options are and what that, what that looks like, how it benefits them, just to make, that information's hard to remember. In the day-to-day of everything that's going on, it's hard for people to know exactly what that looks like and how that works in the nitty-gritty details. And so we've tried to do a good job of, not only Susan sends out a lot of information and we're going to go around to each of the buildings at the start of this year and talk to staff members. We bring in people when we have open enrollment to help educate them on what their choices are and how that might benefit them depending on their situation. But also, like we talked about, building up that website that has resources where they know where to go and find information to just jog their memory, to say, hey, this is where that's at and here's how it affects me and here's how it might benefit me. But, so we kind of have a slew of different ways that we try to tackle that, but, I mean, benefits and insurance is its own monster in itself. And so that's something, yeah, that's, that we try to make sure we have a multitude of ways to help people try to access that and understand it because it takes a little bit of time.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so our next line is Dr. Sanders will give us a report on the exploration, engagement, and experience grant.
Yes, RBB recently received the 3E grant, which is, as you mentioned, exploration, engagement, and experience for $64,420. I asked Jamie Miller to be here tonight. Jamie, as you know, is our Ready Schools Coordinator, and I asked her to explain the details of the grant and how these funds will help our current initiatives.
Good evening, how are you all?
Good evening.
I'll just give you a quick overview and I'll look forward to sharing more down the road in the fall as we start to implement this grant. But the 3E grant is a pathways grant, so supporting districts in starting to both wrap their heads around and make actionable changes toward career pathways, not just in high school, where the next level programs of study are starting to be implemented, which are the CTE clusters of courses that represent different career clusters in industry, but then also looking at PK-12 career progressions and what pieces we can put in place in the elementary and junior high levels to start to better inform students about the pathways that are both available to them and those that are the most, the most quickly growing in our region. So, for example, the business pathways at the high school have generated a lot of interest among students, both business management and entrepreneurship, which is a marketing pathway. And so in each of our schools, student-run businesses or student-run enterprises is a piece of our Ready Schools Plan that has attracted a lot of attention and has been a really excitement-generating strategy within our Ready Schools Plan. So those student-run businesses will be one strategy of the Ready Schools Plan that are, that can benefit from this pathway. So now as students start to self-select into business courses at the high school, into a new entrepreneurship course, which is an elective course at the junior high, and then into various programs at the elementary level as well, that are putting students in those small business owner roles, starting to explore what it looks like to manage money, to delegate roles, to lead, all of those same skills that are on our graduate profile. This grant is just building out various strategies that you can see on the flyer that I shared with you, to start to implement those strategies and those elements of our existing Ready Schools Plan in each of our schools. Any questions?
Looks good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We're excited. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Our next line of business is the 2023 budget calendar, and Matt's going to give us information on that.
You guys get ready for me because I've got quite a few items after this one, so I'll try not to.
Okay.
So the 2023 budget calendar is just an informational item. You guys aren't voting on anything right now, but I just brought this to you for the last couple of years, again, bringing it to you again, just to give you an update of what that process looks like. We've started the heavy lifting of budgeting right now, just, we've got our June 30 balances, which are important to actually being able to start the budget process. Our budget forms are open on Gateway, and I've been actively working on that now since we closed out the month of June. In August, we'll come back and that's where I'll, I'll ask for permission to advertise and I'll give you a rundown of just what the budget looks like, what the difference is from last year, why it looks different, what those numbers are. We'll kind of run through the whole deal, just kind of giving you a comparative of how that looks like and what it's looked like in the past. So that way you have a good idea and an ability to ask questions. I did put on there, just as I always do, if we thought there was a need for a work session to dive into it deeper, I always leave that open to you if you, if you guys feel like that's something that you want to do. But in the last couple of years, we haven't done that, and I think that's, it's been fine as long as I continue to communicate with you about what, what's going on. So September will be when we, we have our budget hearing, and then in October is when we adopt. And so then we'll turn all that into the DOGF, and then we typically get the 1782 notice, which is our actual budget order, which will happen, and typically it happens in December. Sometimes it rolls into the beginning of January, but it'll most likely come in December. So this is just kind of that update of what to plan for here the next couple of months because we will be talking about the budget every month for the next couple of months. But that'll take any questions about the calendar.
Okay. Okay, Matt, just stay there. Looks like we're continuing on here. So this line eight is consideration to approve curriculum associates quotes.
Yeah, so there is a lot there on this one, and so it takes a while to go through this because it's, you've got different program needs, and the principals can attest to this. We've got the diagnostic, you've got the personalized instruction, we had, we had a renewal one more year on our math adoption curriculum. So there was a lot there, and some of that is paid from different places. The diagnostic testing is paid from assessment grant that we get through the state. Part of it's paid through the Boys and Girls Club, that they help offset some of that to the school corporation. And then some of that's paid through our textbook rental fund. But all of that is there, all of that is stuff that we do on a year-to-year basis. But all of that stuff, as it comes together, obviously surpasses the threshold that you guys come back and approve that, but it is just a renewal of the continued programs that we're using. They're not new programs that we haven't used before, so it's stuff that's familiar to our, to our staff and to what we do now, and so it's just approving that and going on with it. So with that, I'm asking for your approval of the curriculum associates quotes for the diagnostic testing, the personalized instruction, and the math and reading curriculum.
Can I have a motion?
I move approval of the curriculum associates quote. A second.
Any questions?
I just, I appreciate the hard work that goes into evaluating and just combing through the thousands of lines of budgetary consideration that you guys do, and it, it looks good, so thank you.
We lean pretty heavy on the buildings and the principals and knowing that curriculum because there's quantity numbers and all that stuff, so it definitely takes some time.
Anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Matt, so the consideration to create an interpreter position.
Yeah, so this is not a position that we've had up to this time in the school corporation, and so we have some students coming in the school corporation that have some specific needs, and so we need to create the position of an interpreter with American Sign Language skills. And so I submitted to you that job description of what that looks like and that it would be an hourly, non-exempt position that may or may not be full-time or part-time, it just depends on the student needs. Right now, we think it'll be full-time, but that obviously depends on how things develop with students and their, their schedule changes. I don't anticipate that changing, but obviously those things do change at time to time, but we needed to create the position. And so that's why we developed the job description, that worked with Brenda and Jennifer Anderson and some different people to look that over, so that we could get that going, and then we can make a hire to make sure that we can meet the needs of those students that need that person. So with that, I'm asking for your approval.
I move approval.
A second.
Any questions from the board?
I got my questions answered earlier, I appreciate it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, line 10, consideration to approve Apex quote.
Yeah, so this is a yearly renewal. Apex is the online curriculum that we use for online course credit. They use it at the junior high, we use it a lot at the high school. Last year, we had unlimited seats and the cost of it was a little bit higher. We don't need the unlimited seats this year. We talked with Mr. Ackerman and Mr. Seglin just about the needs at the junior high and the high school. High school uses a little bit more of the seats than what the junior high does, but with the number that we have, it'll, it'll meet their needs. If we ever had to come back and amend it for any reason, we obviously could do that, but the quote is a little bit lower that, this year because of that. So asking for your approval of the renewal of Apex program.
I move approval of the Apex renewal.
Yeah, I'll second.
Any questions from the board?
I just had a quick question on that. Mr. Seglin, it's okay to ask, at the junior high, how do you guys use it at the junior high?
Yep.
I can hear you.
We, we don't have foreign language teachers, we, 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 But again, it's Mick feels like it's been a good thing for our, for our patrons as far as the ability to go online and purchase tickets. And he's wanting to continue to do that again this school year.
I move approval of the GOFAAN contract pending approval from our-
Yeah, I'll second. I'm sorry.
Yeah, legal department.
Any questions from the board?
I had a question on that one, too. I've had a few parents ask me, is it, make sure I've got it straight, where are we going to a cashless system with all athletic events? Is that correct?
Well, I think he's still, as we continue to move that way, I think he's still going to have that option there for people. And so there, I would imagine, we'll still have that option at least to start the year. I would imagine eventually down the road, we, we might not have that option. It might be easier. But I, I can't imagine that we wouldn't, you know, if someone had, needs to buy the ticket then and there, that we wouldn't be able to figure that out. But we'll continue to look at that as the year goes on.
Okay, that was a concern that somebody brought to my attention. There was absolutely no cash option. I said, I'm not for sure on that, so.
I agree. I have, yeah.
Okay, so we just need to get, make sure we get that clarified. It may be communicated differently out in the community.
Yeah, and we're trying to find ways, whether it's with the pool or with this, or, you know, paying online, you know, textbook curriculum fees and stuff like that. We're trying to make it easier for people to go online and take care of things ahead of time, or to just make it easier for them to take care of this. So it kind of falls in line with that, because it just eliminates some of those handleings of less people handling cash, less, you know, there's less to do with the accounting piece of that, less chance of something bad happening there. So it just kind of cleans that up. But it's not going to completely eliminate that option right away. And just kind of talk with Mick, if somebody needed to do that for one reason or another, I think we'd be able to figure that out, obviously. But in the future, could it eventually just be online sales, possibly? But we want to just continue to make it easier for people to buy those tickets, get them online, you know, have it on their phone.
Just come in and scan?
And he plans to bring back the all, all session, like season tickets for, like passes and stuff like that, too. I don't think he's done that the last couple of years, and we talked about that the other day, about how he wanted to bring those back again this year.
Okay, 'cause I, I didn't know if there was going to be, if somebody used a credit card to buy their ticket at the game, or we're going to start getting hit with a lot of the 3% fee from the banks and so forth. So I didn't know how that all worked out.
Yeah, so I think in this one, it's built into it already, into the cost. But again, on some of that stuff, if hey, if there was a refund or a game got canceled, they would refund the money back and that sort of thing. So, and all that's lined out in the agreement.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? All right, with that, I'd like to vote, please. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes. Line 13, consideration to approve final forms agreement.
Yeah, so final forms is a safety compliance program that's backed by the IHSA. It's for athletic programs. It, it tracks students and coaches' compliance of necessary forms. So I, I put a sheet in the board packet that kind of gave you a look at what it looks like on the online. But essentially, it breaks down and it color codes things for like an athlete that says, hey, they've turned in their physical, but they haven't turned in some of this other necessary paperwork. So the, that person might still be in yellow, or they might still be in red, knowing that, hey, they haven't turned something in. And so you can, you might be able to just shoot off an email real quick that says, hey, you still need to turn this in. And they might be able to submit it digitally. So it, it again, is some of those things that kind of updating some of our tech side. And as far as keeping paperwork and compliance on some of that stuff, it's a lot easier for our coaches. I got to use it in a previous role at my former school district as well, and I got to pilot it and bring it on new when they actually started it. And it takes a little bit of time to teach coaches and parents and help them understand how it works. But once you get everybody on, on with it, it is, it's a lot easier. And so year to year, there's be less for parents to do, because information rolls over, and they can just sign into their account and update their information, and there's less to do. And so from a standpoint of like kids moving from the junior high to the high school, it makes things easier on parents there as well. And then just for Mick and Sam and our coaches as far as tracking what it is that they've turned in, all their necessary paperwork that they need, coaches can take attendance and communicate with parents to say, hey, you know, who was that, who was at practice today and who wasn't? So there's a lot of different features. And I think they're going to start slow with this to get it integrated, but they want to get it approved and start using it. I think right now, somewhere around 75 to 80% of high schools in the state are using it. It's something that the IHSA is really pushing that schools move, move, move on with. They're a partner of the IHSA right now. But it is a good system, but it's going to take a little bit of time to help everybody get over to it from where we're at now, where they're collecting hand documents and tracking things on spreadsheets and all that stuff. So with that, I'll, I'll take questions and ask for your approval.
Can I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the contract with Frontline.
Second?
This is final forms.
Final forms, yeah.
Final forms, yeah.
Getting ahead of us here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think the, all that the coaches have to keep track of, anything that we can get off their plates, I think it's a good thing. So I, I'm very much in favor of this.
Yeah, and it puts on there, so when they download the app on their phone, it automatically, when you build your rosters out, it creates emergency, like, contact cards for all the kids that the coaches can have on their phones, and they can access from their phones. So it does some stuff like that with safety, you know, if something happened to a kid at practice or whatever else, that they could pull up that number and find that number a lot quicker as well. Or they might have a couple of different contacts, if I can't get ahold of mom, or dad, or grandma, whoever that might be, to make sure that, you know, if they need to get ahold of someone, they can. So there's some of that that's built into the system as well through the app. And so it's, it's definitely a good thing in that way.
Any other comments? Let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. Line 14, consideration to approve renewal of Frontline.
Yeah, so this renewal is for time and attendance portion that we use at Frontline. The absence management we use as well, but the absent management portion is paid for through our agreement with Kelly Services for our subs. So they take care of that portion of that bill as a part of their service. So this is just for that time and attendance piece for, for our time sheets and all the stuff that it, it obviously pairs with the absence management. But we use both sides of that, and it's important in our, in our business office processes and stuff like that, and how we're tracking employees and the information that we use. And so this has now started as prices continue to go up, they're passing thresholds. And so it's just something that now, we had to bring it for a board approval because of the cost of it at this point. So with that, I'm asking for your approval to renew the Frontline time and attendance.
I move approval of renewal of the Frontline contract.
A second.
Any questions from the board? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Line 15, consideration to approve double wall tanks and equipment for bus maintenance.
All right, so this is part of the construction project that's going on over here across the street with the additions to the transportation maintenance, and then with the new administration building. This part is specifically, obviously, to the transportation maintenance portion. But it's for those tanks and the equipment that we need to outfit that space, so that our mechanic and, and transportation and maintenance staff have the things and, that they need in that space to make it function the way that we've created it to be. So we've had to source out quotes on this. I put it in the packet for you. Only got one response back. We don't think that the price is unreasonable. It's not really out of line with what we thought it would be. So that didn't really throw us for a curve, but we only got one response. And we did send it out to, to three different people. We just only got the one response. And so I included that in the board packet just for documentation purposes, if it were ever to be pulled in an audit, just to show that we did our due diligence on that as well. So with that, I'm asking for your approval. And this is paid for through 2020 construction bond dollars as well.
Okay. And a motion?
Move approval of the VPS contract.
A second.
Any questions or comments from the board?
How, how is that, how's the construction going on the new maintenance building?
It's coming along. We're a little bit behind schedule, but it's coming along. There's not as much left to do over on the transportation maintenance side as there is on the administration side. I would expect the transportation side to be done definitely before the administration side. But they're, they're moving along. And Dr. Sanders, I don't know if you want to speak anymore to that, but the transportation side is definitely going to be done sooner than the administration building.
We, we continue to be impacted by a lot of what companies are experiencing all across the country in terms of delays in materials being available. We just learned last week that the windows were delayed five to six weeks. And there's really nothing you can do about that. It's just the, the nature of the beast right now. But we're finding ways to continue to, to get whatever we can done. And so it's progressing. Matt and I took a tour just this afternoon to kind of walk through and, and kind of see where we are. We'll do that periodically. We meet every Tuesday morning to address issues. And we have, we maintain a file of what we call loose ends, just to make sure that nothing's falling through the cracks. So it's a, a slow progress, but, but we're still making progress.
Okay. So are the, are the parking lots going to be cleaned out before it starts at school? Are we still going to-
Did you say that? I'm sorry.
Will the parking lots be kind of cleared out before school starts, or is it kind of going to be a mess in behind?
You talking about the front parking lot?
The back, where, around where the, all the different things are parked, that aren't back in the bus pen?
Are you talking about, so you're talking about back there, behind the transportation building now?
Right.
So it'll continue to get cleaned up, yes. But they only, they only paved one half of, of it right now, because they're still moving a lot of heavy equipment on the other side. And so they didn't want to tear up the new pavement. And so they waited on that. We're going to have to continue to ebb and flow there. And so there's still striping that needs to be done. There's definitely still work to be done back there. But we're going to have to continue to be flexible as we move through the different items that need done.
And we've been operating under a temporary occupancy permit for the early childhood center. But we received the final occupancy today. The only thing we're working on is on the outside, is finishing up the playground. That's been staked. We're waiting for the concrete to come in. And we have the playground equipment, so that really shouldn't take too much longer.
Okay, and the, the pave, pavement going into the preschool extension is all done?
Yep. Yep, and striped.
Perfect.
It looks nice.
Is it? Okay, good.
Okay, we are at to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Line 16, consideration to approve purchase of controls for building State Road 46.
This might be my last one.
Really?
It is.
Find another one.
You've not had enough.
So we, we've been having, we've been having a lot of issues with the temperature all over the place out there at the building there on 46. And so our, we've brought out HFI, we've brought out different companies, our maintenance people have been out there working on it. We knew through the facility study, you saw that some of the things that needed addressed out there were mechanicals, controls. And we're at a point right now where the controls that are there at the building, they don't make the parts to, to work on them. And, and there's only one company that even outsourced those in the first place. And so it's hard to even get them in to have, there's only like one person, two people that they can find to even come in and look at them. But we need to get the controls, get the, get the actual equipment online with our current system that we have through Johnson Controls, so that Arnold and his guys can see what's going on diagnostically out there in that building on their, on their system, to have a better idea about what the issue is. Because we're having a hard time figuring out exactly what the problem might be. Because at times, it seems like the system is functioning the way it should, but yet there's not getting the right amount of air in different spaces. And so it's just, it's not as simple as, hey, just come out here and do this, and it's all done. And that equipment is old. And so we need to, we need to get these controls to actually be able to see what's going on. And we need to do it now. We've got kids out there. We've got people being served, students and staff through the Boys and Girls Club and other things like that going on out there. And so we, we need to continue to get this going so that we can, we can take care of what's going on out there. And so the controls will at least allow us to have a better idea of what's going on, so that we can figure out what the actual fix is. And that's something that we're going to have to do anyway. And so I did send you the updated quote from the first one that was in the board packet. Luckily, Christine in Ferguson Law reviews that every time. She caught one little thing in there that they still hadn't fixed. And so I, I put that back to them to say, hey, I think this is what you meant to do, but I think you missed it, which was what Christine pointed out to me. So what I'm asking for is that you're approving the quote pending Ferguson's Law with their satisfactory changes to some of the language that's in there about just how they might change a price based on labor, which we want to get that out of there, just so they can lock in that number. So I'm asking you to approve it that way. And then once we've worked that out, which I would expect, they've been really quick. They turned it around pretty quick today, but they missed that one piece. I would hope that they turn it around tomorrow. But I would expect it to be done this week, so that we can get, working on getting them out there and getting those controls online. So I'm asking for your approval.
I move approval of the purchase of controls for the ECC, the old ECC building.
A second.
Any questions from the board members? Comments?
I think we need to make sure that we get it done for the school year starts and-
I did want to mention, too, and I forgot to mention this, is that Arnold and his guys, we did get some temporary AC units put out there in those individual rooms to, to make sure that it stayed cooler. At one point, one of the rooms was subcooling, so it was cooling further than what it should have. And then other rooms weren't cooling. But we, we've got some temporary units in some of those classrooms where a lot of the kids are usually at and staff is at, to try to make sure that we regulate that temperature a little bit better, as in just a temporary fix until we can figure out all these other things. So we're not just kind of letting it go, making sure that, you know, and trying to communicate with, with Mr. Baldwin, with the Boys and Girls Club about, you know, when they're running their program out there, what we're doing to make sure that that stays right. So I did want to mention that as well.
Right, because the Boys and Girls Club have, they have day, day programs. So there, there are kids out there. We need to make sure that this is fixed.
Absolutely.
Especially before school starts, because there'll be a lot more of them out there.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are at line 17. Dr. Sanders going to discuss consideration to approve revised 2022, 23 school calendar.
Right, let me back up a little bit to be able to give you the, the reason why we're, we are asking to revise the, the school calendar. If you remember, at the May school board meeting, I, I shared how a House Enrolled Act 1003 allows the Indiana, Indiana Department of Education to give schools the opportunity to waive certain state statutes. RBB submitted a 1003 flexibility waiver application on June 3. On July 13, Dirk Ackerman and I attended the Indiana State Board of Education meeting, where they approved our flexibility waiver. RBB intends to use the waiver for the purpose of improving student performance, promoting innovative learning, and to enhance the mission of our school corporation. If you also remember, one of the reasons why I felt it was important to seek this waiver is that our state representatives voted to limit e-learning days next year. School corporations are only allowed three asynchronous e-learning days to count towards the 180 days of instruction. The rest of the e-learning days have to be synchronous, so they have to be live. And so I was really worried about what we, what we were going to do, if we wanted to have some professional development, and also how were we going to conduct parent-teacher conferences under those new restrictions. And so that was why I went ahead and, and wrote the, the waiver. And for RBB, we will be waiving Indiana Code 20-30-2-3, which requires a school corporation to have, to conduct at least 180 instructional days. So instead of tracking our instruction by days, this waiver allows us to track our instructional minutes by minutes. And we are well above the required number of minutes at each of our schools. We're, and even, well, trying to get ahead of my, I'm getting ahead of myself, but the required number of minutes is 54,000 at grades one through six, and 64,800 for grades seven through 12. And at the elementary level, if we take these four, factor in these four early release days, we're still going to be well over 6,000 over the required number of minutes at EPS, over 8,000 at EIS, about 2,500 minutes above the required number of instructional minutes at the junior high, and 4,320 minutes above the required minutes for instruction at the high school. So we're asking the board to revise our school calendar, so that we can have four early release days. So four days next school year. At the secondary level, we will dismiss school at approximately 10:35 at the junior high, and 10:45 at the high school, and then dismiss at 11:45 at EPS and EIS. That will allow the teachers and principals to conduct their professional learning communities in the afternoon, to participate in training, that, to help them to be able to implement innovative instructional strategies, and also to have parent-teacher conferences. Those early release days are going to be September 6. It's a day after Labor Day. And November 2nd and 3rd. Now, on those dates, in November, November 2nd and 3rd, those are the two days that we will get in parent-teacher conferences in addition to providing parent, the professional learning communities. The high school, the, the teachers don't see as many parents as they would at the elementary level. So at the upper grades, you might see teachers doing more professional development at the elementary level. They're going to be pretty busy doing their parent-teacher conferences. And then the, the fourth date would be February 22. I'm sorry, February 28 would be the fourth early release day. So I have a revised calendar that we will post on our website, and I will be sending something home to parents, explaining all of what I just said, the reason, the dates, the times for dismissal on these four days, and, and remind them that they can always check our website out for the revised calendar. So do you have any questions for me?
Can we make a motion?
I move approval of the adjustment to the calendar.
Second?
A second with, with a question. So you're going to, you're going to recommunicate it through a group? But is each building going to, because this is something, some parents have already got some things planned for next year. We just need to make sure it gets communicated. That's all I care about.
Right, so I will be sending out, there'll be a lot of communication. I'll be sending out something right away, explaining all this. And then the schools will be sending out information, and there'll be reminders as we get close to each date. And, and we definitely want parents to understand, and when I, later on in my superintendent's report, I'm going to be talking about our test scores. So it's very important that our teachers have time to get together and talk about the formative assessment data that, that they're gathering through, throughout the year. Talk about how they can adjust their instructional activities based on that, those formative assessment data that, that's provided to them. And talk about the mental health needs of our students. Teachers need time to do that. And, and I, and in RBB, it's also very important to have these parent-teacher conferences. We do value our parents. They are definitely part of the, our, our partnership here. And, and so these early release days, we understand that it, it does require parents to go the extra mile. There's a lot of extra work that, that they have to go through for these early release days, to provide childcare, make sure the children are taken care of. And, and so we want them to understand the importance of these early release days.
Good. And this waiver-
And I believe that. I truly believe, the importance I get. I understand that completely. I just want to make sure we're communicating it, since we'd already sent out previous calendar, correct?
Right. So we'll send out this new calendar, and the, and then also, I think it's important to talk to them about the when school will be dismissed on those days.
Okay. Are the days of the parent-teacher conferences, I presume there's some flexibility as far as what the expectation for the elementary teachers?
Right. So sometimes we, we try to work with the, the elementary teachers to maybe give them some release time during the day. I don't know if this is what you're talking about. But allow some release time during the day, so they can have some conferences at night to accommodate those parents who work all day long, and their only time to meet is, or in, is in the evening.
Anything else? Let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Okay, Dr. Sanders, line 18, consideration to approve agreement with adult and child mental health providers.
Right. This is a, a annual renewal that we have an agreement with Adult and Child. We consider them one of our mental health partners. Under the leadership of Jennifer Anderson, our, formerly Tom Norris, our mental health services for students, they continue to be impactful because of partnerships with such organizations as Adult and Child. Now, Adult and Child bills Medicaid and students' insurances for the, these services to the students. So I am presenting this request to renew our agreement with Adult and Child. And also I need to mention that Christine Bartlett with Ferguson Law has reviewed this agreement and made the necessary changes, and, and they, we have their approval also.
Make, make a motion to approve the adult and child mental health provider contract.
A second.
Okay, any questions, comments from the board? Okay, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're to line 19, so consideration to approve purchase of ticketing and facility asset tracking subscription. Rick is going to talk to us about that.
Evening, everyone. So yes, the ticketing and facility asset tracking subscription. We're partnering with Arnold, the facilities maintenance department, with this. We do a lot of work that goes both ways, that we might have to request a projector to be moved, but we noticed that an electrical outlet has to go with it. So we work together with the ticketing system, and so- So we work together with the ticketing system, and so what happens is the current one that we have doesn't work well with two facility and a technical side, so, plus it's also no longer, it actually reached its end of life. So we're moving on to something that has new and more collaborative workflow with this system. The other part of this is that it was designed for K-12, so this is really nice that we're not trying to take something and then make it work for us. And this was designed for a K-12 in mind. The other thing that is part of this is that Arnold has requested in the past is a way to help him keep track of his own known assets and a maintenance scheduling program. So that way, when the filter is up for renewal in an air HVAC system, it'll alert him that, oh, the HVAC over in this department needs to be part of the maintenance program, or the belts need to be placed or greased. So we're actually working together to make sure that this system works with him and with the IT department. So that way, our flow and results are much better for the staff and students, along with our buildings and making sure we're maintaining them properly. So we did our due diligence in looking for other vendors, we just couldn't find anybody that could match this company, and so we chose Incident IQ as the winner of the quoting, I guess you'd say. But they do offer a lot more services, we just are starting in the small modular portion of it. So again, IT tracking and asset and facility tracking and assets for both of us. So that is a split between the, for the cost will be split between the two departments. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I'd move approval.
A second.
Any questions or comments from the board?
It's nice to get the idea of the coordination between the two sides.
It really does help when we, even on our old system, it worked, but it's really nice that you can get with the teacher, or is it they put their ticket in, and then it's like, oh, hold on a minute, we need their assistance too, so assign it to their staff, they get it done, and they send it back to us, and so it just makes life easier than keeping track of everything.
Okay, with that, let's take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Rick, here you go again. Consideration to approve renewal of Microsoft Software Assurance subscription.
Yeah, so this is just a regular renewal. This is something we bring to you every year. We have a Microsoft Office renewal that's called Software Assurance. This gives us access to Microsoft Office, it gives us the access to all of our servers and the operating systems that are required for our servers to function, which we have to rely on for VersaTrans and Harmony and other applications that we have running on our systems. We need to have the up-to-date versions. So this project, our process here with Assurance, just ensures that we're always with the latest version from Microsoft. So this is just a regular renewal, something we do every year. This time of year, it comes in, so it's like, that's a big hit, but this is our typical time of year, seems like, in summer, that we get these wonderful renewals. But again, these are just standard renewals.
I make a motion to approve the renewal with Microsoft.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Let's take a vote. All those in favor say aye. Okay, line 21, consideration to approve renewal of Archive 3000 subscription.
So this was, they have a new name, Archive 3000, but it's actively learned is what everybody around here is familiar with. But again, it's just a regular yearly renewal with them, and their new name change, of course. This is used at the Edgewood High School, and so it's just, again, just a standard yearly renewal to continue services.
Okay. Do we motion?
I move approval.
Second?
A second.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Go ahead. I was just going to say, it's one, we had it the last three years that I taught, and it was one of the most exciting tools that came in while, during my career, it was just, it was so flexible and it gave me so much as an English teacher. I know it probably wasn't as useful in the math department, for example, but it was really helpful for an English teacher.
And did we use it at the junior high also, or is it just, it starts at the high school?
Just at the high school.
Okay, all right.
With that, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Okay, last one, Rick, for you. Consideration to approve purchase of CareHawk intercom system for Edgewood High School and the junior high.
That is correct. So our current system is a Bogan system that's been in the school corporation way beyond my time here. So it has come to its end of life a little while ago, I found out. We have been maintaining its service by keeping Internet Explorer around, a very old version of Internet Explorer and a very old version of Java. And Microsoft has now announced that Internet Explorer is going to be removed from computers and systems, so no more access, which means we have no more access to the scheduling portion of the Bell system. So we are already using CareHawk intercom systems in the EIS and EPS, those were installed a few years ago. The reason for the CareHawk system is that once we get it all built together, it will be one easy system for us to have safety and security announcements from one point, from either Dr. Sanders or Matt Irwin, to communicate out to the schools, take tornado or whatever might be the incident through a cohesive system versus trying to do four different systems. So the CareHawk system is already in place, and we're just building on top of that feature. We did go out for bids, there was another, only two companies in Indiana that sell it, and the third one never responded, so we went with this company. It's also the same company that did the EIS and EPS, so again, we have familiarity with them and a system that has future abilities for growth, so we're happy with that. So with that, I just look for your approval.
Do we motion?
And any questions?
Thank you. Second?
A second.
Any questions or comments for Rick? With that, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and I'll say that on the CareHawk, we're going to try everything we can to get it in before school starts, but coming to the board late and supply chains, we're going to do our best to get it in before school starts up.
One quick question, completely unrelated to this. How are we doing on the camera system?
They're actually in the building, working, installing, cabling, and getting things going, so we're.
In all the buildings?
Nope, just here, just at the high school right now.
Okay, what's their projected completion?
There's, we're predicting about two months here to get all the cameras installed here, and then they'll move on to the next school, and probably about a month at junior high-ish, about a month, month and a half, so, probably six months total.
So, but the other schools will have cameras up and running, the old ones will be up and running until the new ones?
Yeah, we're just moving down the line, and we had to finish getting the servers and everything put in place, so yeah. But they're taking about two months here, but they did pretty good today, so hopefully they'll keep working. The challenge is going to be as soon as the students come back, we'll have to work around that. They're trying to get some of the stuff done that is going to be disruptive to the students, so like they're going to try to do the exterior ones where they have to hammer drill into the limestone to get the new ones mounted, so they're going to try to get those done before they arrive back. The pool, the auditorium, and a couple other areas that we've, the cafeteria, that's also key areas that we're trying to get done before they arrive, just because those are going to be the most disruptive.
Good, thank you.
Okay. We are, we voted, right? I just want to make sure. So we're down to the superintendent's report.
Right. I just want to start by thanking Matt and Rick. As you could tell when you look at the agenda, they are very busy guys. They're always looking out for the best program, making sure that we're doing things the right way, and so I just want to publicly thank both of them. I just wanted to give you a report on this year's iLearn results, and I want you to think about this piece of information I want to start with. Over the last two years, we probably have only had about 18 weeks of normalcy and really limited in-person instruction over the last two years. So this past school year and the year before, basically the last nine weeks of the grading period were semi-normal. Last year, even though we were in-person the whole school year, we had first semester probably through February, we just had a lot of students missing school due to the pandemic. And so Edgewood Schools, like every other school in the country, has their work, our work cut out for us. But RBB has been working hard the last two years to try to get our test scores back to pre-pandemic numbers. Some of the things that we've done, are doing, and will continue to do, is I just want to give a shout out to our classroom teachers and our principals, who have really intensified the depth and the pace of instruction, knowing that students are coming to them, that not having the skills that they normally will have at that point. So they have to realize that, and they have to adjust their instruction to be able to introduce a skill that maybe before was a review of a skill. And so that makes them have to adjust their pacing of their instruction. We've, we're relying on formative assessments like we've never had before to track student growth and to diagnose the academic needs. We've expanded summer school the last two years, provided transportation, increased the number of teachers conducting summer school to try to help students get caught back up. I really believe that our efforts with Ready Schools and providing our teachers with training on innovative instruction, our students participating in innovative learning activities will really help to boost those scores back up. As you know, this, over this last year, we've really renewed our passion and understanding the why behind professional learning communities, and so we're still, we're continuing to try to find more and more time for our teachers to get together, to analyze student assessment data, to collaborate on instruction and remediation activities. And that's why we built in these four early release days to give the teachers more time to talk about where their students are academically, to help support them with mental health, in order to boost these scores back up. And we're also implementing MTSS, which is Multi-Tierred System of Supports, to better direct our resources, once again, using data to meet the academic and mental health needs of our students. And if, we would be here for a couple hours to really go through all this data, so I really thought maybe this would be something you could take home and look at yourself, and then either make an appointment to come see me, or we could talk by phone if you have any questions. But I looked at this test data, and I looked to see whether our RBB's percentage of proficient students, whether we were above the state average, how we compared to the state average. I took a look at how our test scores for 2022, how they compared to pre-pandemic numbers. And on the second page, I printed out the test results from 2019, when we had the iLearn test right before the pandemic hit. And then also looking at how we compared to last year, 2021, and then the second, or the back page of the first page, shows how we compare to other school corporations. And so the places where I've marked and highlighted in blue are where I thought was a positive trend. So for example, under math, on table one, if you look at table one, grades three and four, we have 59.4 who tested proficient. Well, that is above the state average, as you can see, and it's also above or approaching the 2021 scores. Grades, probably the grades we, what I would like to focus on more, and our schools are already doing it, we had some meetings at the end of the school year where we talked about some different strategies that we could implement, but I, and I know that they agree, one of the areas we need to work on would be those grades six, seventh, and eighth in terms of math, where we're, we are under the state average, and there is a pretty, a big gap between this year's scores and pre-pandemic scores. And if you look at table two, really grades three and five are areas that we would like to see some more immediate improvement. Grade four, grade four really knocked it out of the park quite a bit across the corporation. And then if we could just, for the sake of time, look at tables four, five, and six real quick. I looked at school corporations around us that were similar in size. If you look at each of the schools that I listed here, I put in, underneath the name of each school, the number of students tested. So you can, of course MCC is the largest, with 4,489 students approximately tested, and I believe that Eastern Greed would be the smallest number. Just kind of see how we compare to other school corporations. And once again, you can see a third and fourth grade doing pretty well in math, and once grade math for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and John Siglin and Chandler Poe, they have a great plan for the fall, and we really want to support their efforts there. Table five, English Language Arts, we are doing pretty well as a corporation there. And then table six is basically looking at both English Language Arts and math, and you can see that we are doing fairly well comparison to the other school corporations in that area. The administrators and I, and Matt, we are having an administrative retreat on August 1st and 2nd, and part of what we're going to do on that retreat is to dive into these numbers and just brainstorm, what else can we do to meet the needs of our students? When I was up at the State Board of Education meeting on July 13th, they gave a report on a study of the impact of the pandemic, and one of the statements they made is, it'll take about a three to five-year period to fully recover from that, and that kind of scares me, so we don't want to wait three to five years. We, this is something we wanted to try to address as efficiently and quickly as possible. So like I said, take a minute to look over these results, and there's other data that I could present you to, if you would like them. We could drill down to how our students on free and reduced lunch are doing. We could look at different ethnicities. We could look at our English Language students. So there's, we could drill down to the data a little bit more and look at specific populations, if you'd like to see that information down the road. So, any questions on all that?
We're in depth.
That's really good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're to RBB EA comments from Doug Gules.
Oh, there we go. Well, July, that means August is coming up, means about three weeks from now, we'll be in school. A lot of thoughts, as you guys have been talking, I might go in reverse order. Dr. Sanders, you reminded me of some things when you're talking about iLearn scores and recovering, you know, teachers have talked about that too, and, you know, we talked about that in the math department, like, yeah, these kids don't know as much, and, you know, and everybody kind of commiserates. I was fortunate enough to be in a, a four-day conference last week with my AP Calculus, and being around some other teachers, and that's always refreshing and invigorating because you get to just talk to other colleagues, you get out of your fishbowl, and you also realize you, you're not the only ones that have these problems, it's, not that we're not gonna do something about it, but sometimes it just makes you at least feel better, we're all kinda in this fight and in this struggle a little bit, and I know we'll get there because we have good leaders here that, that think about these things, and so appreciate your, trying to get it, stay ahead of the curve on that, without a doubt. To Mr. Demoss, actively learn, I tried. I tried every time, that's just a side note to you, it's a great program, it really is, all the teachers talk about it, it's hard to sometimes get, get mathematics involved in there, but I think that's a good thing, without a doubt, a lot of the teachers talk about that at the high school. Dr. Sanders, thanks again for looking ahead about the calendar, I remember we talked about that in some corporation discussion meetings in the spring about applying for this waiver, 'cause we both knew it wasn't real practical to just have three, a limit of three synchronous days, that's all I gotta say about that, so thank you, I won't go any further, we have some flexibility with that. Looking forward to school, like I said, Mr. Tucker, you reminded me about the insurance committee, he has some questions, and I don't, I don't, I'm not gonna bore you to death, but I remember Matt came to me, it's probably the year of nineteen, twenty nineteen and twenty, maybe, we kinda started this insurance committee, looking back, it's like, at the worst possible time, 'cause COVID hit, and, and it is, it's been a good idea, it's just it, it took a while getting traction, 'cause we, excuse me, we couldn't meet very often, and, but fast forward to a, a few years out, at least a couple of years out, it's been a very eye-opening thing for me, I mean, heck, I've been here twenty-eight years, and I know this much about insurance, and mostly it's just I've been fortunate not to have to use it a ton, I've been healthy enough, but, and I've said that, if you're using it a lot, you know about it, and if you don't, you don't know a lot about it, and new teachers don't know, and I think the big deal on this is really just PR, and we finally had enough people on the committee to just get educated enough so that we can, at least that's our goal anyway, I just wanted to tell you this, that, that we have some point people in the building, teachers, that can just inform people, or at least point them the right way, because it is, it, again, most people don't know about it unless you have to use it, so I'm kinda glad about our progress with that, and we'll keep working on that, and it's, like I said, it's been very informative, and Susan Shocknay's been very helpful, so that I think we are finally to the point we can better inform our teachers about choices, not to make their choices for them, of course, but to, to show them the options and, and the website and all these things, and worst-case scenario, say, email Susan Shocknay, set up an appointment. So, the information, it's all about the information, it's about knowing things, and I know we always this funny window at the beginning of the year, that you gotta sign up, you know, it's, everything of the year, at the beginning of the year is stressful, but I think it's coming along quite well, it's just, again, we started at the worst time, we didn't know it, but, and it's gotten a lot better, so, anyways, some good things happening, and looking forward to the start of school, and, oh, if you have to count, twenty-three days.
Thank you. Okay, so we're at Board Member Comments, Mr. Demoss?
I just agree with Mr. Yules, it's always exciting, beginning of the school year, it's always overwhelming as a teacher, and I know the students are also excited, a little bit regret, regretting the loss of summer, but it's always exciting seeing the new year start. And I just wanted to throw a shout-out, congratulations to our baseball coach, Bob Jones, who was inducted into the Monroe County Hall of Fame as, after he got his five-hundredth career win, it's a well-deserved honor, and, and a great job, Bob, but that's all.
Mr. Tucker?
I wanna echo what Mr. Demoss said about Coach Jones, I was able, fortunate to go to the banquet on Friday night, and he, his acceptance speech is very heartwarming, and you could tell he still has a passion for kids after forty, forty-some-plus years, so hats off to Mr. Jones and his family for, for all they've done for the school. And echoing what Mr. Yules said, we are all in a fishbowl, every school corporation's gonna have the same headaches moving forward, and you look at the test scores from junior high, and those kids are gonna be in high school, and then we all have to work together to, to try to build those kids back up throughout the, throughout the, the state of Indiana. Also wanted to kinda re-miss up, I didn't mention, our thoughts, prayers are with the families in Greenwood and Beach Grove this evening, and it just, just reminds us about school safety, and all the things that go on within the upcoming school year, and I know there's only a few people here, but if this is people watching on record, and you communicate with the school as much as you can, if you hear things going on, and we're all a village, and we have to work together to help keep everybody safe. Thank you.
I haven't got a lot to say, I, I was reading about the Greenwood incident, apparently a young man that had no military background, no police background, took care of the shooter, so that was great. Madam Secretary, you did a wonderful job tonight.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry I couldn't commit to being here before five till six, I'm sorry, just tied up on things, life gets in the way, but, you know, I'm, I always say, I'm so proud of this system, I'm so proud of the way we operate. Jerry, you've been such a great leader, the principals, the building principals and administrators are fantastic, and, you know, just keep, keep moving forward, so we really appreciate you.
Well, thank you for allowing me to get through this meeting a little shaky, but we got there, so, I appreciate the opportunity. We missed Mr. Kerr tonight, I hope he's having a great time with his family. Thank you for all the work that, again, Dr. Sanders, Matt, Rick, everybody that's putting in during the summer, it's, it's a lot, you guys are amazing, I'm in awe of you every time we come up here, of all that you do for us, and I just wanna say how much I appreciate you guys. Thank you again so much for the donations that receive, that we receive for the school corporation, it is tremendous, and it's amazing that we get to give to these students, and the other thing I wanna, I wanna say is, just keep in your thoughts and prayers, Michael Doring, he is still continuing to go through his treatments, and just keep him in your thoughts. We also have a student that his mother has put out publicly that he is going through some cancer treatment, and just need to keep his thoughts on him and prayers for, in Slayball. And with that, there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.